Welcome, we'll call the meeting to order. The Orange County Board of Education, we're calling to order. Daru, do we want to do roll call?
Trustee Barky.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
President.
Trustee Sparks.
Here.
Trustee Shaw.
Here.
Trustee Vodes.
Here.
Okay.
I want to adopt the regular meeting of June 21, 2023, but I want to pull item 13, which is a special board meeting. I talked with Sarah Bach and she's okay with going with the first Wednesday of the month in August, which I believe is August 2nd.
Okay, so moved.
So have a second?
Second.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That meeting is adopted. Naina, do we have any speaker cards for any closed session items?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. At this point, the board will take a break. We'll go into closed session to conduct appeal hearings followed by closed session items and we'll resume at 5 o'clock. Thank you. Okay?
Welcome to the Orange County Board of Education. All right. Do we have a report out from Jonathan Brenner? No, we'll do that later?
Yeah.
Okay. For invocation, let me call up, we have the wonderful Rich Davis, a teaching leader, or elder at Barion Bible Ministries taught in the Santa Ana School District and had three children who go to school in our OC schools. Welcome.
You unite your hearts with me in prayer. I appreciate that. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you first of all for the gift of children, just an amazing gift, and for the families that they belong to. Pray for the board here as they make the decisions that affect their kids, and just pray for wisdom that they would make decisions that are honoring to you. I just want to thank you for any items that are discussed, that they be done so in a way that honors you, and just understand what a tremendous privilege it is to serve on this board and that the community, the members of the community are here to express their any concerns they might have. But we be done so in a way that's honoring to you. And pray all these things in the name of your beloved Son. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Davis. And for our Pledge of Allegiance, we have the good Bill Masters, president of, resident of Orange. I thought it said president of Orange.
Please, I'm going to have you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Masters. Naina, do we have any introductions today? Okay. And now we have a special presentation. Thirty-eight elementary schools in Orange County have been recognized by State Superintendent Tony Thurman as a 2023 California Distinguished School. After the COVID-19 pandemic placed the awards on pause last year, the California Distinguished Schools Program returned to honor the hard work, resilience, and dedication of 356 schools throughout the state. Selected schools were praised for their ability to provide quality education to students and, you know, hoping to navigate effects of the pandemic. The California Department of Education selects eligible schools by measuring performance on indicators with the statewide accountability system known as the California School Dashboard, of which most of you, if not all of you, are aware. They analyze data including test scores, suspension rates, school environment, absenteeism, and so forth. Distinguished Schools Program established in 1991 Distinguished Schools Program, established in 1985, selects schools for their work in two major categories: their ability to close the achievement gaps and achievement of exceptional student performance. So it's my pleasure to honor and recognize 38 schools in Orange County. Five districts are with us here tonight because we are kind of entering summertime, so I appreciate you guys being able to make it tonight. So first of all, would representatives from the Brea-Olinda Unified please step up to the front? And I think we're all going to take a picture with you.
And there's tape right here.
This is because they're going to take a picture, so.
Cypress is next. If the representative from Cypress School District will come up, and all board members just stay down front. Next up, we have Fountain Valley. Next up is Garden Grove. And that's Board Member Terry Roco. And last but not least is Westminster School District. You're welcome to stay for the board meeting, or if you need to leave for other matters, then you're certainly able to leave.
Thank you, congratulations. Okay. All right, so now I'm going to ask the board for nominations for the 2324 president, and I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to nominate Tim Shaw for president.
I'll second that.
Can I vote now?
Call for the vote? Any other nominations? Then we'll close the nomination and take it for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. How nice.
And he will preside at the July meeting, so.
All right.
May I now make a nomination for Vice President?
You may.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Sparks for Vice President.
Any other nominations?
Hearing none.
We'll close it and take it for a vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Well, I guess we finish that deal. And now, I'm calling for nominations for the Clerk of the Board. Do I have any nominations for the Clerk?
I'd like to make a nomination for Mary Barker.
Do I have a second?
I definitely second that.
Any other nominations? Okay, we'll call it for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Well, thank you all. All right, so we will turn the gavel over at the July meeting, because typically we do our election in July, but for various reasons, we wanted to do the nominations today. Okay, so the new term will begin July 1, 2023. Now, we will move on to public comments, and how many public comments do we have?
I think we're up to 10.
Okay.
So perhaps we go for three-minute comments?
Sure, yeah.
So we'll give each person three minutes, and what I'll do is I'll read a name and then who's on deck. So if the on-deck person wants to be ready to roll, we can keep moving with our comments. So we'll start with Stephanie, and then followed by Michelle.
Good evening, Board. I hope you all are doing well. My name is Stephanie Camacho Van Dyke. I'm the Director of Advocacy and Education at the LGBTQ Centro OC. I keep coming back to this point, that the timing is all too coincidental. The decision from Huntington Beach City Council diverse this decision to fly the pride flag. The support from the Board of Education to back AB 1314, a proposed piece of legislation that would endanger our trans youth. The decision for the majority of the Board of Supervisors to remove all pride flags and all non-governmental flags from county buildings. The anti-LGBTQ+ and anti-Semitic pamphlets that were distributed around several neighborhoods around Huntington Beach as of last week. The proposed book ban from the Huntington Beach City Council for their library system to remove LGBTQ literature. 525 state bills that have been introduced that attack the LGBTQ community, and over 220 of those that attack the trans community. Seventy pieces of legislation that have become law. Currently, we are witnessing the reverberations across the country happening here in Orange County. We must do more to combat against this hate and misinformation. This includes the Board of Education stepping up to do its part. But for whom? It's clear which side you are yielding to. We see that the recent attacks on our local LGBTQ community have been outright attempts to silence our voices and eradicate our presence. I challenge you to have dialogues with the LGBTQ community, as well as students and families. These dialogues will help inform your policy decisions and ensure that they are inclusive and equitable. At this point, I'm unaware of any of your efforts to do so. I want to share that I'm grateful for our community and community partners here with us today, and as of today, I understand that V-Rock, who's in the House today, has extended an invitation for you all to meet to further discuss these issues so you can support our community and as well as our students. As you all are probably aware, the deadline is quickly approaching. So please, make a decision, meet with us, we're here, we want to have this conversation with you all. And our last point is that the LGBTQ Centro OC will continue to be visible and speak out against all forms of hatred here in Orange County and within our educational system. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle will be followed by James.
Good evening, distinguished board members. I hope you all have fun plans for the summer. My name is Michelle O'Brien. I'm a mom, a grandma, and a taxpayer. I'm here today to say thank you. Thank you for your hard work, your dedication. Thank you for supporting school choice and charter schools. Thank you for speaking up for students' and parents' rights. Thank you for your countless hours and for making Orange County schools the best it can be. Thank you for all that you do, and we appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. James, followed by Merrilise.
Good afternoon, Board. Thank you for having me here. My name is James Huhn, and I am part of Viet Rainbow Orange County's Research Committee. I have expertise in LGBTQ health disparities, public health, and qualitative work. I'm here to remind the Board of our invitation, thank you Stephanie for shouting us out, of our invitation for you to meet with LGBTQ+ organizations to discuss LGBTQ inclusive policies for K through 12 education. At the last board meeting, we had delivered a letter with these following demands: one, to rescind your endorsement of AB 1314; two, to prioritizing calendar discussions and initiatives centered on LGBTQ support and policies; and three, to engage in dialogue with us by the end of June, which is Pride Month. While I'm up here, I also want to share some statistics from our Orange County LGBTQ Youth Needs Assessment that we conducted a couple years ago. Almost a third of respondents identified with multiple gender identities, not just one. Half knew that they were part of the LGBTQ community between the ages of 10 to 12. Half felt very low connection with their school, and this was even more severe among transgender students. And 75% of respondents reported high or moderate to high social anxiety. And so I don't think these statistics are giving the full picture, but I think they do tell one story, is that our schools currently aren't the safest place for our LGBTQ students. And again, I ask the Board that you meet with us so that we can ensure that students feel much more connected to their schools, that they feel much safer so that they can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merrilise, followed by Lori.
Good evening. My name is Merrilise Robinson. I'm a policy manager at Asian Americans Advancing Justice Southern California, and I'm here to talk to you and vocalize my support for LGBTQ+ students and their rights to privacy. As you may have heard time and time again, from the community members, not all youth have a safe home to turn to as they discover and explore their identities. Teachers and school administrators are trusted adults in youth lives, who they can turn to for guidance when they feel that adult support is lacking at home. Encouraging school staff to out their students to parents before they are ready to do so removes the sense of safety and trust that youth feel toward these influential adults in their lives. It pushes them to withdraw and to see school as unsafe and an untrustworthy environment. It damages the relationship teachers have with not just their LGBTQ+ students, but once this information is known in the classroom, that students cannot go to teachers for support without being reported on, it destroys classroom trust. Youth need to feel safe and nurtured in schools, not imprisoned and spied upon, to grow and to discover themselves. The LGBTQ+ community and allies have come to you on multiple occasions with our concerns. We have made them well-known, and we made ourselves available to you to speak on these issues. Yet, your body still chose to support AB 1314 after it died in community, while hearing from your constituents about the harm supporting this bill would cause to their community, and without engaging in a dialogue with the stakeholders. So we once again calling you to meet with the LGBTQ+ community members and its leaders by the end of the month, which is next week, to have a detailed and thoughtful discussion on these issues, so that you can understand the needs of our communities and your communities, and the impact of the actions that you have, take, are on these communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, followed by Erin.
Hi. Research shows that parents are the greatest advocates for their kids. They have their child's best interests and their protection in mind. AB 1314 was written by a loving mom who happened to be a Democrat and attorney. She loved her daughter and her daughter's friends enough to notice that the entire group of girls suddenly wanted to choose different gender pronouns than what matched them biologically. Why this sudden passion? It was after they had attended their comprehensive sexual education class. I have heard those who oppose this bill and other parents' rights bills say that their kids don't want to be outed by their teachers or other school personnel. Of course, students would feel uncomfortable having their parents know that they're using different pronouns, names, and bathrooms at school, or if they've had suicidal thoughts. It's normal for kids not to want their parents to know if they're getting bad grades, skipping class, or exhibiting poor conduct at school. However, schools should be informing parents about the well-being of their child academically, physically, socially, and behavior-wise. Our duty, which sponsored Assembly Bill 1314, is a nonpartisan group, not affiliated with any religion, and membership includes lesbian and gay parents. Some members are parents of transitioners, those who believe they were a different gender than their sex, and who went on puberty blockers and cross-sex hormones or surgeries to pass as their desired gender, but later returned to identifying as their sex. Other members are parents of de-sisters, those who firmly believe that they were a different gender but who returned to identifying as their sex prior to medicalizing. Most members are parents of children still identifying as the gender opposite their sex. Our duty works with thousands of gender-confused kids, and not a single family has in any way rejected their child when he adopted a transgender identity. There's no data showing that parents are engaging in abusive behavior toward their gender-confused children. Children are protected by laws that protect children from abuse, and teachers, as mandatory reporters, should report abuse. Unfounded concern about abuse is not a valid reason for keeping parents uninformed about their child's gender confusion. Please, inform parents if there is some issue going on at school, suicidal thoughts, or a change in gender identity. This is important, and parents have the right to know, for the sake of their children and their protection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin, followed by Wendy.
Good evening, Board. Unfortunately, I have a very different set of facts for you all. Research suggests that among LGBTQ youth, only one-third experience parental acceptance. I can testify myself being not in that one-third. This is a very common experience in our community. With an additional one-third experiencing parental rejection, some 40% of homeless youth identify as LGBTQ. Many of them are homeless due to rejection from their families. And another one-third choose not to disclose their identity until they are adults. Another study found that young adults who report high levels of parental rejection are eight times more likely to report attempting suicide and six times more likely to report high levels of depression. Many LGBTQ lack access to affirming spaces, with only 55% of LGBTQ youth reporting that their school is LGBTQ-affirming, and only 37% saying that their home is LGBTQ-affirming. If students don't feel comfortable talking to their families, and they cannot talk to their teachers and their counselors at school, they will talk to no one. This will not change the fact of their internal lived experience. It will only mean that they have nowhere that they can go. I would also like to highlight, I'm sure you're all familiar with AB 1266, which was passed over a decade ago, which requires that students be allowed to use facilities and participate in activities aligned with their gender identity. I would like to read from the California Department of Education's guidance around implementation of this bill. It asks, "May a student's gender identity be shared with the student's parents, other students, or members of the public? The California Department of Education recommends, or says, 'A transgender or gender nonconforming student may not express their gender identity openly in all contexts, including at home. Revealing a student's gender identity or expression to others may compromise the student's safety. Thus, preserving a student's privacy is of the utmost importance. The right of transgender students to keep their transgender status private is grounded in California's anti-discrimination laws, as well as in federal and state laws. Disclosing that a student is transgender without the student's permission may violate California's anti-discrimination law by increasing the student's vulnerability to harassment and may violate the student's right to privacy." Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy, followed by Mai.
Hello? Oh, sorry. Hello, my name is Wendy, and I am a resident of Irvine, and I am concerned to hear you haven't rescinded your endorsement of AB 1314. So I believe that protecting LGBTQ youth is suicide prevention, and data supports this as well. And around 40% of homeless And around 40% of homeless youth are LGBTQ plus, according to True Colors United. So when students are outed, they may be kicked out of their homes. So that I, so therefore compelling schools to out students creates an unsafe learning environment for them and does not contribute to student success. So I ask that you meet with local LGBTQ orgs like VROC and the LGBTQ Center here in Orange County to discuss these issues. It is incredibly important to support our LGBTQ youth. Thank you.
Mai followed by Bill.
Hello, Board. My name is May Nguyen and I am with Viet Rainbow Orange County. As last meeting, we've given you a physical letter. We have also sent you all an email, but just to restate again, just in case you all forget, our three requests is rescinding your endorsements of anti-trans and LGBTQ plus legislations like AB 1314, prioritize and calendaring discussions and initiatives centering LGBTQ issues, and engaging a dialogue with LGBTQ communities like VROC, the Center, and so on. Why am I repeating this? Because last meeting, there, our communities came out to share their stories and the impact that you all have made by making such decisions to endorse. I'm here today to share as, as a person who personally experienced challenges. As a queer youth at the age of 15, I had faced homelessness because of my identity. Through no fault of my parents, because they did not understand, they did not know what being LGBTQ plus is. And since then, I struggled with mental health challenges, SI, and, and many following issues without the lack of support from family members. Excuse me, because the reason, I, I, I don't like public speaking, but it's so important for you all to hear that these stories are true. The facts are true. And that it's really hard to hear leaders like yourselves who is supposed to be for our students, to protect our students. And I'm sorry, but you are on your phone right now as I'm sharing my experiences with you all.
We're just verifying the research numbers that you guys have been presenting.
I just want to make sure because you all have, like, I don't feel the respect that we're trying to be here to give you all. But let me just add this. We all know the popular golden rule, respect others as you want to be respected, but I would like to add a rule that my first grade teacher had taught me. When I first went to school, I had accidentally cut someone in line because, the lines, right? And my teacher said, "No, you can't do that. That's not fair." I do not understand what, what that means. I've never had to be in line before. I never know what it meant to cut someone in line. I never know what it meant to have hurt someone because of my lack of experience. But my teacher had shared that, is it's not because, it's, it's not an excuse to be ignorant for you to not be, to not, for you to not be apologetic, for not, for you to not fix your actions and be accountable for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill will be followed by Ames.
My name is Bill Masters. I'm an Orange resident. I've been in California since 1960. I know how hard school board members work. I also know how hard these board members here work. They work diligently. They work day and night. If they're on their cell phones and they're texting, it's for a reason. It's to serve the community, to help people, to help the students. As far as LGBT and then, I have friends of mine that are gay, all right? And when I would go to their, their house and watch football, yes, watch football with the boys, and they would say, watching somebody on TV, and they would be very gay, and he would say, "That is not what gay is all about. Gay is a sexual preference." And I've heard that from more gay people. What they've done is they've taken this and they bring it in your face all the time. It's not really that big a deal. If you guys would just slow down and let it normally happen, but you're sticking it in everybody's face, and people don't like that. These teachers work hard enough as it is. Go to your parents, and these kids that say, "Well, my parents, you know, my, my parents are bad people. They kicked me out." No, I don't think they kicked you out. I think what they did was they said, "Hmm, I don't like your lifestyle." That's what they're saying. And we need to have better morals in our, in our schools and in our communities. And these board members here are helping that happen and keeping people grounded and keeping people moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will finish off with Ames.
Good evening. My name is Ames, and as someone who came out recently trans, I can only imagine how hard it would be as a younger person to be able to discover something like this within yourself in the climate that we live in today. I'm here to, I'm here as a resident to help voice the importance of rescinding AB 1214. This is a trying time for us queer folks, and while I recognize that all of you are here to help the community, this is another way path forward, and this is what we're trying to voice. If we sound passionate, it's because we care, and if we sound desperate, it's because it isn't. During, during an age, this is a trying time, especially during an age where acts of legislation throughout our country have been refusing our youth their safety, freedom, and dignity to embrace our true selves. I implore you to be cognizant of the impact and message you send to our future children and our local communities, not just in your endorsement, but also in your inaction. Silence on this matter is at its best in silence and at its worst complicity in the ongoing historical anti-LGBT oppression that many of us have faced throughout our lives and our educational careers. It is an experience we know intimately well, that you are aware of, that requires in all of us with some spine, just response.
Okay, thank you all. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar, items seven through 11.
Make the motion.
Okay, do you have a second? All in favor of approving the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that moves us to item 12. Naina, do we have any charter submissions?
We do not.
Okay. Skip item 13. We'll move to item 14, approving the Department of Education Local Control and Accountability Plan as an action item. Do we want to?
I'll make the motion, but I'm gonna have some conversation.
Okay.
And a subsidiary motion.
Okay, so you're making a motion?
So, because I'm gonna make a subsidiary motion.
Okay.
Adding to the LCAP, maybe somebody else should make the motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Discussion?
So, again, kudos to the staff for creating such a wonderful document. It's a lot of work to create this. Boy, it must be close to 200 pages here. There's a couple items that I thought would, would make it read better. And Dr. Mary Montes, if I can have you come up, because I'd like to get your opinion here. On page 10 of this document, it talks about, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, these are gonna be some questions for you. It has to do with my subsidiary, my, what I'm thinking to make a subsidiary motion. Are you familiar with the parental rights policy that George Valdez introduced in April?
I am. I think it was my first meeting here.
Right, right. What do you think of it?
I think it provides guidance for our parents.
Wonderful. For parents or staff?
Staff.
Okay, very good. That's what I wanted you to hear.
Yeah.
Or that's what I'd like you to say, and you did, so thank you very much. So what I'd like to do as part of the, the primary motion, which is to accept the LCAP, is to add just a few words, and that would be on page 10 of the document under goal one, and that would be paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4. It's with the, it's close to the bottom, and it says, "Recognizing the value of educational input and positive impact in our schools and programs, our actions reflect maintaining, expanding the use of parent portals so families have accessibility to their students' attendance, academic progress, assessment, and results." And I would also like to add just a few choice words, and these are the words, "To support and implement OCBE Board Policy 600-2." It's as simple as that. So that's my motion, so I'll need a second.
That's a friendly motion. I'd be happy to second it.
Okay.
Wait a minute, can I second it?
Oh, fine. Sorry, you didn't jump in.
Since it's my policy, I, I definitely will second that.
Okay. All in favor?
You vote on the subsidiary, and then you vote on the primary.
The subsidiary motion.
Right.
Right, which was seconded, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, voting on the subsidiary motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes five to zero. Now we go to the first.
Right.
Motion, and we had a second, and now we discuss? Are we, any discussion on that? Okay. And then we'll put that to a vote?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
I'm sorry, we're going kind of fast. Sorry about that.
Aye.
Okay, five to zero. Okay, are you good?
So, if we could get the language that you added to make sure that we have that correct, because those have to be submitted before, by next week.
Right, right. So it's what I said, "To support and implement OCBE Board Policy 600-2."
And that was on page 10?
That was on page 10, under goal one, and it was indentation four.
Adding it to that indentation four.
Right.
Bullet point.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay. Then are we ready to move on to number 15?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So now, approving the College and Career Prep Academy CCPA Local Control and Accountability Plan as an action item.
I'll, I'll make the motion to do such.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I do.
Go for it.
I'm gonna give kudos to that man out there for what he's done for this program and the Career Technical School. It's absolutely incredible. Thank you so much for working so hard over these years. It's a, it's a real credit to this department, and again, on behalf of this board, we appreciate what you and your staff are doing out there.
I'll second that. I'll echo as well. Good work, everybody. All right, so any other discussion or comments? We'll take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, wonderful. Moving on to item 16, approving the annual county school services fund budget of the county superintendent of schools as an action item.
I'll move approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, there is some discussion.
All right. Trustee Nguyen, do you want to start the discussion? Perfect.
My good friend Renee, you knew I was gonna ask for you. Thank you for being here. So, part of the discussion that we've had for a long, long time here is, is that it's sometimes very difficult to do what we do with all the emails and correspondence and meetings and this and that, and we don't make a living by doing this full-time. It's very hard. So, I, I've heard from my colleagues, and I believe there's a consensus, we want to raise the professionalism and the constituent response and communication with people who, who want to meet with us, who want information. We, we, we find it very difficult to communicate. I don't do, you know, the tweets, I don't do Facebook, I don't do any of that political, I just don't have time. So, what I thought, as we work forward, rather than making any cuts, which I feel this board has the ability to do, and that's part of the great impasse that we have with this good superintendent, is I'm gonna be introducing in the future a board policy where we will be utilizing staff and making us more professional in our communications. So, I just wanted to get your opinion on that, and where would those funds come from to, to do that?
So this, Dr. Maharish has already stated that, you know, he wants to help with the board's work. He's not opposed to that at all, and he has basically instructed staff to work the board to meet your needs. And so currently, we already have some staff allocated toward the board. We would just be allocating more staff, as we've discussed with some of the trustees individually. It really depends on the work that needs to be done, on what type of person that would be, because everybody has a different expertise. And so we would have the ability to pool staff as needed to be able to help with those assignments.
The term statutory ways that this board works and the staff covering as far as statutory abilities, what was used often in the dialogue. If you can, just for the record, the, the newsroom, the, the item that's in our budget, to my knowledge, that's non-statutory. Is that correct?
Well, the newsroom is not in the budget. The Communications and Media Department, of which the newsroom is a small portion of, is, that is doing work for all of the schools in Orange County.
Right, so, so that's for all of the schools?
Well, it's for our department. Well, our department as a county office is to basically help support our schools and all schools in Orange County. That is the role of a county office.
So, this is a good conversation. So the, you can call it communications, social media, there's a lot of terms to describe essentially the same thing. So, our Communications Department's social media, they work for other school districts in Orange County?
No, I didn't say that. They don't, no. They work for a state.
Could you clarify what you said?
So let's, example, Teacher of the Year. Large event, they do videos of the, the winning teachers and stuff like that. That supports those school districts and our county as a whole. That's what I'm talking about. Work that basically covers all districts and charter schools and everybody else within the county.
So you would agree that would be non-statutory by education codes, but it's a good thing. We all support the teachers and that particular ward because they do recognize great, outstanding individuals and humans. Okay. I'm, I'm just putting this out in the public to get it on the record. So, anyway, I, I just talk about these things because I don't want to interfere with, with the budget and start making any changes. That makes it far too difficult and challenging, but I, I will be doing for my board. Just because these are things that we can't talk about outside of this environment, I, I will be working with, with our attorney on creating a policy that helps us be more professional in our communications. That's it.
Thank you.
And I would just add to that, Dr. Williams, that in our various meetings that we've had, we've had discussion about, you know, we as board members, if we're providing content, when we, when we provide content, they've indicated that they're happy to assign it to someone to help us with that production part, and, you know, so it depends, it depends on kind of what we need and want. But we've made, I think, some progress along those lines, so.
And the newsletter, I think you've spoke about, so those type of things.
Yeah, and we, we talked about, you know, implementing some sort of newsletter, maybe, and the board, you know, at some point, we, it's hard because we, we had to talk individually, but we've talked about some sort of newsletter, maybe once a semester or once a year to start with, but we have to provide content for such a newsletter, and then we can ask people to opt-in, and we can put a link on our website and things like that so that we can promote the things that we're doing. So I think these are important discussions, because we, we've been trying to kind of ramp this up for a period of time.
It's hard. I mean, like what you're doing in Washington DC.
Right.
Is huge in the community. And how many people know about that?
Right.
Not too many.
Right.
And, and that is a very significant impact for the, the kids that are homeless. You're, you're working with one of our charter schools to get federal funds to implement a program there, which I would love to see the details. Maybe you can talk about it under Board Communications.
Sure.
But, but that's the type of thing that I'm referring to. Those are the good things.
Absolutely. And we, we ended up approving that the link for a radio interview could go, could go on, on our website. But there is, there's a lot of great work that we're doing that is not getting out there, and so I think these are important discussions to have.
I'd love to see something, oh, sorry, something as basic as like the photos.
I'd love to see something, oh, sorry, something as basic as like the photos tonight on our website. I think that would be nice, you know, recognizing. And so I'd love to see, because I know we take photos, but I never really see them anywhere.
Good question, yeah.
Yeah, very good. George, yes, or Trustee Valdez.
So tonight, and without naming names, okay, but, you know, one of the things I really noticed in our inter-district appeals, again, I'm not naming names, there's no, no one's being identified, but it became pretty apparent to me that there's a district in Orange County that is routinely denying these appeals, knowing that only a smaller percentage of parents are going to take the next step to bring their appeal here. And it looks like a business policy to me. And, you know, I'd like to, I think the public should be aware that, I don't think we've denied an inter-district appeal since I've been sitting on this board. And again, I don't think that's inappropriate, you know, to put out our record on that without name, again, without naming names, of course. But I think the people need to know, you know, where we stand on that, and that an inter-district appeal is possible, and that you can do these things. I genuinely believe that our constituents do not know this. The vast majority do not know this.
You know, what I would say is not even put our record out there, but just let people know that it's something they can do, that it's an option, I think, you know, informational.
Yeah, that's the kind of thing we could put in our newsletter, in terms of content of what we're taking the lead on.
And that's the thing we could engage as board members, you know, what goes in and what goes out. I was just sort of throwing out an idea, but, you know, I just, I genuinely believe that there's so many people that don't know that they have that option. And I think it's imperative that that information gets out.
Good. Any other discussion? Okay, thank you.
So I think we had a motion and a second already on this one.
Motion and a second, we had discussion. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So that moves us to number 17, accepting California School Dashboard Local Indicators, OCDE Schools and Programs, Access County Community, Jubinaw Hall, OCCS, CHEP, PCHS, and Orange County Special Education.
Yeah, you've received the report. Yeah, you've received a report, Madam President. The local indicators to the county offices of education include the following, state priorities, priority 1, basic services, priority 2, implementation of state academic standards, priority 3, family engagement, priority 6, school climate, priority 7, access to broad course of study, priority 9, coordination of services for exposed students, and priority 10, coordination of services for foster youth. I want to thank our staff that put this together. We've met all the local indicators, and I asked the board to accept the California Dashboard of the local indicators.
Thank you for the wonderful work that you all are doing. Do we have?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve.
Okay, second?
I second.
Discussion?
Yeah, point of parliamentary order here. We're accepting the report, correct?
Correct.
We're not approving it.
You're accepting it, yes.
Okay, okay. So, maybe it should be, I move to accept.
I'm sorry, I move to accept.
Oh, okay. Perfect. And we have a second?
I second.
And now we're discussing. Anyone want to jump in for additional discussion?
Again, kudos to the staff for getting all this data.
Wonderful. All right, then we'll take it for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Accepted. All right, moving on to number 18, accept California School Dashboard Local Indicators, College and Career Prep Academy, and the same type of deal receiving the item.
I'll make a motion for item 18.
I'll second.
All right, discussion. Any discussion, questions?
Do you have any, do you have anything to tell us?
Any comments?
Expelled youth component, that's the charter school. That wouldn't fall, so that's one of our indicators. Just want to point that out.
Want to brag a little bit more about what you do? Come on, we're giving you the offer. We're giving you the podium.
Yesterday, we took 15 students to Disneyland for the leadership conference. And the best thing about it is when they left, they left as a group and had, and they got to spend the evening at Disneyland. So, it was an amazing day, and I wanted to share that with you. And I'll send you some photos.
Nice.
Awesome.
Thank you all for all the great work you do.
Thank you very much.
Vern, you want to say a few words?
No, I'm good, just if you have any questions or anything, I'm.
I don't think so.
Okay.
All right, we're ready to approve, or accept. Okay?
We just both got.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we all accept it. And that moves us to item 19, accept the Orange County Department of Education Annual Summary Report, receiving the item.
Yes, you also receive the annual report summarizing the continuous improvement supports that the Orange County Department supports the local districts with their local accountability plans. Per ed code 52066, there are two levels. The first one is we support all Orange County school districts. Level 1, by bringing districts together for shared learning through various networks, embedding continuous improvement process into all learning networks, and providing training for curriculum and instruction, and student supports, and then targeting professional learning opportunities towards the needs of districts based on the ALCAP analysis. For the additional supports, level 2 supports, we support districts with data analysis to understand the root causes of lower level of performance and disparities related to performance of significant student groups identified in the California dashboard, creating action plans aimed at improving these performance of identified student groups, and providing coaching and supporting technical assistance to help implementation of their action plans referred to as differentiated assistance, level 2. So I asked the board to accept the annual summary report as well.
Okay. Do I?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second? Okay, discussion.
Doctor, so, on this report?
Yes.
Who participates in its creation? Who does the bread and butter? The nuts and bolts?
Our staff does.
Okay.
Staff and Med Services.
Okay. And can we just recognize?
Sure, yeah. So would you like me to name off some of the names? Because it's a whole slew of people. It's Diana Earl's group from Continuous Improvement, they're the ones that actually lead the work. So it's she and her staff. Jane, and I'm blanking on her.
Donnie.
Donnie has a huge input in this, and so, her and Assessment and Accountability Team as well. So thank you for allowing me to shout out their names.
And the purpose of this information that you're creating here is required by education codes, is that correct?
Correct. It's an annual thing we're supposed to do.
Okay. And where does this go from here?
Well, there's technical assistance, so we meet with these school districts throughout the year. I'll give you an example. Chronic absenteeism is one of the areas, right? So at one time, the state was telling us to not bring kids to school because if you're sick, don't come to school. Yet we got dinged for it, right? So now we're working through what that might look like. So, you got damned if you do or damned if you didn't, right? And so we want sick kids at school last year. This is based off of last year's report. So we work with school districts to identify root causes. We identify districts in the area of math, ELA is another area on the academic side. We look at subgroups, foster youth groups, English learners, socioeconomic disadvantaged students as well. So we work with them in different networks and work on, it's a two-year cycle, we work on how to improve systems within our school districts. That's the level 2.
And this is for all students?
This is for identified districts.
What districts are those?
There's about 18, and they're different levels, but there are 18 different districts that have been identified. We can get you to list a few.
Are they listed on this document?
They're not listed on the document.
Are you allowed to say who they are?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head which districts there are.
But there are identified districts that receive extra help.
Supports.
By the OCDE staff, is that correct?
Correct.
I see. So we don't know those districts, but they go in and they assist them by doing that?
Correct. We have networks, and we meet together here, and we go through some of their root causes, some of the rationale of why students are. A lot of it has to do with absenteeism. Kids aren't in school, they can't learn.
Couldn't you move easily from an ADA model to an enrollment model?
We would love to, yeah.
A lot of states do that, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Because then that accounts for people being sick and
Correct.
Gives a little more flexibility.
Absolutely.
Just take that up the chain. Any other questions?
We have a motion.
We have a motion, second, and discussion, and now we'll take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we move on to information items, and we'll start with the Communication Information Discussion. And Dr. Williams, you're here to talk about your proclamation certificate.
Right, so unfortunately, I had a medical emergency, then I had to leave very spontaneously for my newborn baby. So if I left rather hurriedly, it was based upon a true emergency. But one of the issues that I wanted to bring up to the board to get a consensus, to help direct staff, is we have certificates that we give, and we're allowed to give certificates out. We gave certificates this evening, and it's a fairly nicely designed certificate we made 10 years ago, 12 years ago. Time goes by so quickly, and it was a vast improvement upon what we had at that time. It recently came to my attention that one of my constituents was involved in a very important endeavor in Afghan, screening Afghanistan with one of the leaders there that helped fight Russia in the war. And he was a local veteran that had a group. And this Afghan leader was killed. And they were going around the nation getting proclamations for this individual leader from Afghanistan. So, he asked me for one, and of course, I thought, okay, maybe the certificate would be fine. But I thought, well, let's maybe make what we have now a little bit better, where we can, as individual board members, have proclamations. And so, I left a sample, and I guess we have it in our red packet?
Yes.
Did you make that? Okay. So.
And then there's attached to it, a clip of our sample paper.
Right. So, the one that's here, that Naina so kindly created, was when Todd Spitzer was chairman, this is back in 215. And the idea and concept was to make something like that. So, we can, as individual board members, nominate either as a board or individually, and create these proclamations.
Nice. Yeah.
And so they put in our packet, two different models, a portrait, landscape and portrait, is that right? I don't know if they're in the right order to you guys as the audience, but, and then Ken's sample, Dr. Williams' sample is like this, in terms of orientation.
That's what the board of supervisors provide.
That's, oh, that's the board of supervisors, okay.
I vote for this one.
Okay.
And what, the conversation that I had with Dr. Williams is that you could choose either or. We had the landscape and the portrait. Previously, you only had the landscape. And so, Naina didn't create it. Our wonderful communications staff is working on it. And we have it sent out so that, just like on the certificates, it's raised lettering, I mean, raised foil and so forth. This sample is not, is just the ink, but envision it the way that this is.
Sure.
And then you could make the determination. So you don't have to just do one or the other, we have both available. And so, if you're doing a certificate for whatever reason, it could be the landscape, if you wanted a proclamation, or any, anything that you wanted necessarily, you know, outlined on this, then you just identify it in this format, and we would do that. So it gives you some options.
So you're just creating a landscape and a vertical?
Yeah, portrait.
Portrait. So I, assuming there's a consensus that we can direct our staff.
Do we have to vote on this, or we just say, yeah, we like it?
We'll send that out, so that, we just wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with it. And if you are, then we'll send that out so that we can get that prepared, and then we'll have that in the future.
I like it.
Is there a preference for the color scheme? Do you all like this color scheme?
I think orange county, orange, I think. And I like the gold.
I like the gold.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah.
So it would be the same colors and scheme as?
Unless you all change it, yeah.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Okay, now we have announcements. Any announcements from superintendent or deputy superintendent?
Couple of announcements. Your next meeting is Wednesday, July 5th, so coming right out of the 4th of July holidays. Submission deadline is today. Your board packet delivery will be June 30th. And I also wanted to let you know, inside of your red folder, there's also, the staff is interested in submitting Golden Bell applications to CSBA, California School Boards Association. We've done that over the years. Their criteria is that it has to be a program that has benefits, not just the county office, but also districts in the county, and has been in existence for more than one year. This year, our staff is interested in submitting Crisis Response Network for consideration, and also the Well Spaces for consideration to CSBA. So we, there are write-ups in your folder in terms of what we would be submitting to them, and we wanted to run that by the board. I had conversations with the president. She felt that it was important enough for you all to be, also be aware. So, just bringing that to your attention, if anyone has any concerns or questions, then let us know. But we're really proud of both of those. Our Crisis Response Network responds to incidences throughout the county, whether it's at a school district or charter. If a student passes away, if a faculty member passes away, if there are horrific, you know, car accidents, things where there are traumas involved, then the districts and the charters know that they can contact our crisis response teams. They will go out, they'll provide counseling. We have some animals also that they take out, and they provide resources and support. We've also trained many of the staff out in the districts and so forth, so that they can be responsive without contacting us. But in many situations, they need additional resources. And so, it's been a phenomenal team of individuals, their clinicians, social workers, people that have counseling experience and so forth doing that. And so I just wanted to highlight that and bring that to your attention. In addition, I also wanted to make mention that our staff is working on a grant application with Chapman University Thompson Policy Institute. It's a statewide residency technical assistance grant for teachers. And so, wanted to bring that to your attention, just so that you were aware. Not sure whether or not we will, you know, that will move forward, where we'll get that. But because of the partnership with Chapman, wanted to make sure that you all were aware of it in advance. And then the last thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is that I have submitted my retirement to Dr. Maharis.
Wow.
And I will be starting a transition in, leaving the department in the fall. And Dr. Maharis has named my replacement as Renee Hendrick. And so, pleased to inform you of that. But it's with sadness and happiness that I'm having this dialogue. I've been here at the department 33 years, and supporting education, students, and families for over 42. So, it's time.
Well, thank you for all your dedication and service.
So, we'll continue to work with the board. Executive team has seen Renee and I have been working together with you all for some time. So we'll be easing into transition. Dr. Williams was here when I took this seat, and so I'll start sitting in the audience[1732.88] And so I'll start sitting in the audience, maybe in a month or so. And Renee will sit up here, and I'll support her, and we'll move forward. But you'll be in good hands, so.
Well, hopefully, you'll get some good travel and trips and get a little downtime because you've worked so hard for the students of Orange County.
Can I say something? This woman is amazing. We've had our differences. Way back when Lynn April Heartline was here, this goes back like 15 years. She asked me, Ken, I'm going to be retiring soon, and who do you think should get training me? First thing, first person I thought of was Naina. I go, that's your gal. She's smart, she's intuitive, she's witty, she's funny, and she's done a remarkable job for the last, even though we've had our differences of opinion. And we've said some few things that might have hurt each other's feelings. I still love you, sister. You're absolutely awesome. And I didn't know that you're going to be announcing that tonight.
Yeah, I'm shocked.
But we're very happy for your future.
Thank you.
We will miss you.
I'll miss this place, too.
The drama.
You're welcome to visit. We meet the first Wednesday.
Yeah, we do.
Don't be surprised if you see me.
Wow, thank you for that. Thank you for your service. Okay, well, piggybacking off what you said, I'm just going to jump into the I would ask the board, look at the information that she put in the red packet about the Golden Bell awards because the president has to sign along with the superintendent if that if it's the will of, and for me, is it the will of the board to support the Crisis Response Network and the well spaces as described in the award consideration? So I believe the decision has to be made by the 30th, is that right?
Right, the application, it's an electronic, so you would just be letting us know whether or not
So if you guys could just have a chance to read that over, I don't want to put pressure on you up here on the dais, but if you would read it through, and then how do they give feedback?
Just let me know. If you all could communicate with me by Monday so that we could finalize that.
Okay.
Just send us a reminder in case it like gets buried in a stack. Yeah, just remind us.
Okay, okay.
And then I'll reach out to you and let you know.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, and do we have any legislative updates, committee report, or additional board member comments?
I think Naina's was big enough for me.
That was, yeah. Oh, and report out, oh, yeah, we have a report out, too, before we wrap up. Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. Congratulations to Naina Boyd. This is the report out for the closed sessions for today's meeting. For closed sessions 1 through 5, the board held a discussion with council. No action was taken except with respect to items 2 through 3. That was to approve Epstein, Becker, and Green's invoices numbered 110-9204, 110-9206, and 110-9207. Again, good evening, good to be with you, and that's the report out for the closed sessions.
And Mr. Brenner, if I could bring to your attention, there's an outstanding December that has never been reported out. So I had provided that some time ago. I just want to bring it to your attention so that your accounting office has been
I appreciate that. I'll follow up on that, and I'll see you about that on July 5th. Thank you.
Perfect, okay. Would you have a few board member comments? Trustee Shaw, you indicated you have a comment.
Yes, thank you. Well, I too want to thank Naina for the great help and friendship we've developed and helping me learn the ropes when I got here. And I do want to state for the record, I've always been very nice to Renee, so. You, okay. I wanted to ask if there was any movement happening. I had asked last time that we maybe put on our website links and other information to our charter schools. And was that clear? And has anyone done anything with that? I was just going to ask about that.
We have not done that as of yet. I have a couple of things that I want to dialogue with you all about. About, I think we've got a process in terms of as you're saying, like with the pictures, with the links and so forth, the links to the charter schools and so forth, we're going to work with media to try to figure out how to do that. And then, but in terms of a point person, is there one of you that we can identify that at least would be able to say yea or nay? Or do you want us just to keep coming back to the board meeting? Because otherwise, there's the delay factor.
Well, I don't know that there's anything particularly urgent. If, you know, maybe it's as easy to bring it to a board meeting so we can all
That's fine. I just want to make sure.
It'll be a work in progress, is what I assume it would be.
And you've dialogued with the EC, you know, as well?
I wonder if I could ask Renee, I might, I didn't want to slow down our momentum as we were approving items, but as we were looking at the budget, I did want to thank Renee and Naina spent a couple, probably what, an hour or two walking through the budget with me, kind of page by page, and it's going through it in great detail. And a few things I thought maybe it'd be worth pointing out to everyone out there in TV land and in the audience. So I'm on page, right at the beginning in the summary. The 2023-24 general fund budget is $342 million and change. So this line here, I think, is very important. "After multiple years of declining enrollment and increasing local property taxes, the budget has reached a stage where we are considered to be at minimum state aid funded. This means any increases in the LCFF calculation from COLAs may result in increasing funds to the Orange County courts and not OCDE programs. For 22 to 20, excuse me, for 2023 to 24, only the local control funding formula and a couple of specific programs will receive a cost of the living adjustment of 8.22%." I think I basically get that, but could you articulate, I would have trouble articulating this. Could you put that into plain English for everybody?
So you've heard from a couple of school districts that say their minimum basic aid or community funded is what they call it, which means that if they get, in your formula, if you get more property taxes than the state formula, you get to keep everything. So there, that's what that's considered. County offices don't get that same luxury. So once we hit our funding formula cap, instead of keeping the excess taxes, ours revert to the county courts, which then saves the state money because they're not going to backfill the county courts. And so because of that, if we were to receive, say, $100 in additional cost of living increase, we may not get $100. We may only get $70, depending how the formula works, if that makes sense. So we don't actually get to keep that. The county courts are the recipient of that.
Renee, there was a group working on that. Joe Ross was leading it from Marin County. What ever happened to that group?
They are still there. I think it's a difficult conversation. And I think, you know, right now, we've been also trying with AB 906 to kind of get the base up. But I think there's 58 county offices in the state. Some county offices, some neighboring us on both sides, get significantly more funding than we do in their base, like $60 million. And they don't want to lose that by changing the base. So I think some of those all lead into the same, which is a different conversation than the excess property tax. And so somehow, they're mashing together, and they're not getting the traction they need.
Gotcha.
So.
Thank you.
So wasn't there legislation also to reverse that trend, that the money was supposed to go to us rather than the courts was going to come to us?
Yeah.
There was no legislation?
Joe Ross was working on it.
They were, there's a group that's been trying to work, mostly it's Marin and some of those coastal
And Joe, I believe, retired, so he was really leading it.
I know Marin has been still very involved in that conversation. I think it's just a, you know, we're arguing against the Department of Finance, basically, right? And so I think it's just a difficult conversation. And we're stuck in the middle between a lot of them because we still have a little more room in our base. And so we're not what they called a hold harmless. So let's say San Diego County is one big next to us. They are already at their base. They really shouldn't grow anymore because they're so far above their hold harmless. We're still below ours, so we could still grow a little bit. And we still run the largest state programs, you know, school programs in the state. And so we feel that those dollars should be spent on our students. And so it's an interesting conversation, but that group has had a difficult time getting momentum.
What is the answer to resolve that issue? Is it legislative?
Probably. And I think when you have state budget constrictions right now, it's going to be a harder conversation. So I think that makes it harder because if we got the money, then they're going to have to backfill the county courts more. And so I think that's where the conversation leads into.
And I bet you, if you ask the average legislator about this, they have no idea
No.
that this is occurring, that they're taking money from county offices of education to do what we do best.
Right.
And they're giving it to the courts.
Right. Well, even, you know, AB 906 is why we were, you know, trying so hard to support that is helping them understand the base that we actually do do and the services that we provide. When Dr. Merriman just talked about that differentiated assistance, that's all a brand-new thing that came from the LCAP. That's all brand-new work that we're required to perform. And so we've received some new money for it, but it is, 18 districts in that system is a lot of additional work.
Well, you know, we are dearly loved by Senator David Mann. I think he would be the perfect one to sponsor such legislation. And I'm not saying that in a spiteful way.
Yeah.
But I think that's something that any of the state legislators should be really working on because they are taking money from our programs and giving it to the court programs.
Right.
That maybe is a little project we work on next year.
One other thing, Renee, if I could get you to correct me if I go wrong here. But the numbers I'm pulling, looking at in the budget, so the general fund budget, $342 million and change. And I'm finding the number on our reserve, which I'm pulling off of page 24.
Is that B 24, Jim?
Yeah, excuse me, B 25. So the, I guess that we're calling it the Reserve for Economic Uncertainties, but basically just our reserve money that's not been designated for any particular purpose.
Correct.
$184 million, almost $185 million and change. So if I'm doing my math right, that's about a 54% reserve we have. Now, I know as the county department of ed, we probably need more of a reserve than most government agencies, but I feel like that is a very healthy reserve.
Most people are.
I can't, I come from a city council where we do not have a 54% general fund reserve in the bank at that city, I can assure you.
Well, and as you look at our multi-year projections, we talked about those will come down. But, you know, we've gone through some historic years of new money coming into the organization that, you know, is accounted for and helps us save some funds. So I think all school districts are much higher, probably not to that rate. It is, you know, not unusual for a county office to have a higher since a lot of our services are fee-for-service. And so it's not like a real school district where we can, we can't go out and generate new revenue. So there is a higher need there, but I do, we do have some planned items to spend those dollars down.
And for local school districts that we have in the county that might, I'm not thinking of any one in particular, honestly, but I imagine there might be some that are in, you know, financial difficulty with declining enrollment or other things going on. But is there any way, I mean, we can help them out as given our, I don't know?
Well, this board has always had a very conservative view, which is part of the reason why our reserve is the way it is, to make sure we're living within our means. Those districts have that same ability to do that also, and they also have some pretty significant reserves. And then there's 28 school districts, so how do you choose who gets what?
That's a brilliant answer, Renee, thank you. But I do, I do think people might have the idea that we've not been particularly, you know, fiscally prudent up here, around here. But I think when you look at the actual number of close to $185 million in reserve, and there's actually a lot bigger reserve that it's dollars that have been kind of designated for specific purpose.
Yeah, the 70,000, additional 70,000.
70 million.
I mean, 70 million.
70 million.
70 million, yes.
So quite a good reserve. And I just wanted to thank, you know, the staff for working so hard on the budget and, you know, over the years, being so fiscally prudent. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other board comments?
I have
Trustee Valdez.
So Renee, I want to congratulate you. Naina, I want to congratulate you. I want to point out for the record that I've been nice to both of you. And Renee, I look forward to working with you as the deputy superintendent. I also wanted to make a brief comment to our LGBTQ constituents who continue to voice their opposition to this board's support of AB 1314. Respectfully to all the persons who, you know, bring their comments here, I just don't, I've continued to read the bill, and I just don't view it, that's, I don't interpret it the same way. And I'm going to read, you know, into the public sphere here, the Legislative Council's digest, which is at the beginning of the bill. And it says, "Existing law requires the mental health treatment or counseling of a minor authorized by these provisions to include involvement of the minor's parent or guardian, unless, in the opinion of the professional person who is treating or counseling the minor, the involvement would be inappropriate." I just don't see that as outing the student. The bill goes on to state, the bill, this bill would, notwithstanding the consent provisions described above, provide that a parent or guardian has the right to be notified in writing within three days from the date any teacher, counselor, or employee of the school becomes aware that a pupil is identifying at school as a gender that does not align with the child's sex on their birth certificate, dot, 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 using sex-segregated school programs and activities, including athletic teams and competitions. So when I interpret the bill, respectfully to all, I believe that student has already outed him or herself. At that point, I believe a parent should be notified. The bill takes into account the counseling, the private counseling session where it may not be appropriate to inform their parent. That's how I interpret the bill, and I could be wrong. Now, I am a licensed attorney in the state of California, and I've been wrong before, and I admit that. But I just don't, I don't see this as hateful. I don't see this as outing students, and that's why I supported this. I ask my constituents who continue to, you know, bring their public comments here, and you are welcome to do so, to please read the actual bill itself. I do not believe it's hateful. I do not believe this is outing students. And I just wanted to, you know, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
You know, George, I would just add, too, that the schools are mandatory reporters of abuse. So if in such counseling it is determined that there might be abuse, they have to report that. So I think that's an extra safety measure that maybe is overlooked.
Thank you for your comments. Well, I'll just leave some final comments. I just want to thank Naina and Renee and all of you all for supporting my presidency the last year. This will be the last gavel that I hit before I turn it over to trustee Shaw. So I thank you all for, you know, guiding me through this year. I really appreciate all your help. And so with that, I will call the meeting adjourned.